Everyone's here, call the meeting into order. John, would you help us with the...
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, everyone's here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public is here, and they're all under contract, so we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, Dave?
Okay, some donations. It's kind of an annual donation to the tech ed department at the high school from Gary Wisproctor, hardwood and softwood lumber, valued at approximately $8,000. And then Clarion Research, a survey that Ms. Rhonda Hare took, and they paid her $200 for taking the assessment survey, and that money's going off through Chain for their supplies and things. So we'll need a motion to accept those.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dave, question. Where does that...where do they put that wood? And what do they use it for?
They're gonna use it just for various projects.
Projects.
What I hear is it's higher quality wood than we normally buy, so they're very happy to have it for whatever kind of wood projects they're making in class.
It's sort of on the second floor of the Mesa and Door Shop area.
Do you have to...you have to cure it for a while?
No, it's in somebody's garage, I understand.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. Good. That's great. Okay. Clarion Research, we did that. Okay. School visits. School visits.
I went to graduation. It was very nice. I loved the speeches. I thought the kids did a wonderful job of speeches. Very good. And it was not longer than we anticipated. I don't know if it was because we had so many kids giving speeches or what. It was very nice. Kids were good.
I thought it was very nice as well. I would like to ask the president to share how the...how went with the kids crossing the stage for their deployments.
Well, it was an interesting evening.
Could you expand on that a little bit?
The first one started with a marble in my hand, and there ended up a...I think I must've picked up about 85 or so.
What did you do with them?
Huh?
What did you do with them? Were they in your pocket?
I'm not gonna tell. I may be using them some other time.
It became mosaic in his home.
No, I left them in one of the containers that we use for deployments. I mean, I couldn't keep them in my pockets because they were...
Was that the senior praying?
Sure looked like me, I tell you.
That's cute.
The first one, when I got it, and I thought, "Oh, no."
Is that the first time they've done something? I thought you passed on today. Good.
I passed a bunch of them on today.
Oh, you did.
I mean, Dave, here.
Well, actually, he did. I tried giving them back to the kids because I shook their hands. But they were too smart for that. I thought the best part, though, were the kids who came up and apologized to him, "I'm sorry, but I have to do this."
Oh, that's sweet.
And yet, it's the first time I've seen those kids coming up with smiles. And it was really neat, because normally they just...
Probably took the pressure off, too, a little bit, to do something fun.
Off of them and...
Off of them, yeah. No, off of them.
But it was fun.
The speeches were great. They were the best, I think, I've ever heard.
You know, we've gotta do something about the speed...the sound system. There has to be something that comes back to behind, because I can't hear them. I mean, it's just...you can't really hear their speeches.
Oh, the people...
Behind the microphone.
Oh, okay. Because we could hear...if people spoke right into it, you could really hear.
They had it set up quite well initially, but that was without 2,000 people in the gymnasium, and just all the collateral noise from that and absorption and everything is largely, I think, why it was hard to hear further out in the audience area.
Rob, was there someone adjusting sound back there, Carl?
No, we had changed it up.
Okay. Because it started humming at one time and then it stopped?
Yeah. The one thing we want to know is, we have a speaker out on the ceiling, the center part of the floor, behind the stage, but if we run that, then we get more static off the mic system.
Feedback. Oh, so there are two ceiling speakers?
Shut that down, that's why you didn't hear it very well.
One above each.
Yeah, they can zone it based on half of the gym, and at first they tried running it with the whole gym on, and it had lots of feedback. So they shut down the rear half of the gym, and that's why it couldn't hear from behind you. But that was in order to restrict the feedback that we're getting, the loud hum.
What happened to...
Go ahead.
What happened to the slideshow of the kids with their pictures?
Technical error. When Mr. Dornfeld went to his Surface Computer, it had timed out, and he had thought he could just turn it back on and it'd be good to go, and it wasn't. And he got it running about halfway through as students were walking across, so he made a choice to run it at the end then. So as everyone was walking out, the slides were going through.
Wouldn't it be easier, maybe, or to look into as far as the sound system goes? Because there's so many now that are portable, you know, the tripod sort of thing that they make, and you could just kind of set them up and go to a system for something like...it might be a little easier to hear than the overhead sorts of things? I mean, and I know there's...we don't necessarily...but the music department has some...they're like, when you...when we speak in the...or in the comments, you know, those kinds of speakers may be a little easier than something coming from the ceiling.
We've toyed with those ideas. Cole Pancratz is a kid that graduated. He's a fantastic sound technician. He worked on our gym sound and really felt that that was the best that we had available. But as I explained to Mr. Johnson, you can have everything set up perfectly for an empty gym, but once you put 2,000 people in it, it changes all the dynamics. The sound gets soaked up, it bounces back to the speakers differently, and so without...you know, if we could bring 2,000 people in and then adjust our settings, then maybe we could really get it tuned in well. But it's so hard to do while you're in the middle of graduation. So every year, we're kind of, what did we do last year, and how can we improve it? I think over the past four years, it has improved. It's not perfect yet, though, that's for sure.
You're the principal, you should get this done.
All right.
But to clarify, the real issue isn't...I mean, if somebody speaks into the mic, it can be heard. The real issue we're talking about is hearing behind the speaker.
I think so, but I do also think that the different speakers were heard, better or worse, based on how they had the microphone. Somebody had said to me, you know, when Ryan Weisie turned around backwards and had the microphone up in front of his face, it sounded perfectly. Maybe we should take away the stand and have everyone hold the mic and get it in front. The student speakers practiced the day before. They ran through their entire speeches, and it sounded good when they're doing it. But again, the dynamics change when you fill the room up with people.
You weren't harder to hear.
Oh, okay.
But again, you know, it depends on the tallness of the person, too, and how close they get to it.
Good, you're going?
Yeah. It was much better, though. In other years, we got a lot of...
Yeah.
It was good.
Yeah.
I made a visit to Chain School for environmental work, and it was awesome. Hats off Rhonda to that, to your school for doing that. That is an incredible, incredible, well-oiled machine.
What was the 20th?
The 20th year. The 20th year, but it's incredible how the children are all put in groups, and they're mixed up. They're not with their class, they're all mixed up by age, and all the different stations that they go to, and everything is there that you need, and it's so well orchestrated, and there were so many parent volunteers, and the topics that the kids covered, it's just such a great thing. Has the weather always cooperated?
We always plan a rain date.
Oh, okay.
That's inside the air that we had used.
Because the weather was perfect. The kids were great. It's just...it's just a great school. It's a great thing. And I know that's not an easy thing to pull off, so thanks for doing that, and your faculty.
Well, I did a little differently this year. I went to the, I think it's fourth grade, yeah, fourth grade track meet, and was an official starter at the fourth grade track meet, which was held, I can't remember, in early May, beautiful day, as it turned out, at the old Harbor Park Field track. And Linda Caceres, many of you remember, is a starter for track, still is, she's a professional starter, so she brought her starter pistols, so we were able to use the, you know, starter pistols, which the kids got a big kick out of. A lot of the staff said it makes it a little bit more official when you do that. They always do a whistle or something in the past, at least the last few years. And so it was a lot of fun. We started...we watched a lot of kids run around, do a lot of things, but they had a...they really had a great time. And kids in the stand, you know, they root for every race, they're there cheering them on. So it was a lot of fun. They run it just like a track meet, trials, and then finals, and all that sort of thing.
Do they all run, or is it...
They have different...they have different teams based upon their teachers.
Oh.
You know, like, you know, I can't even think of the names right now, but anyway, so-and-so's relay team, and so-and-so's that sort of thing. And it was really fun, they had a great time. It turned out to be a beautiful day, cool in the morning, real cool, but by the time noon came along, you know, down to, you know, just regular shirts rather than having to have sweatshirts on, kind of thing. Just anecdotally, as you, many of you know, I work out in the garden with Kathy Miller, and she...I was telling her about it the next day, and she said, "You know, my daughter, Sarah, who's now 25 or something in nursing in Milwaukee, still says that that was the most enjoyable day of her elementary career. She loved that day." And I thought, I could see why, the kids had a great time, real exciting. All of my kids remember that day that they go out there, and so it was a lot of fun. They have lunch out there, spend the whole day. It was great. Real good.
I had the opportunity to attend both the choir and band senior tribute concerts. You could tell which parents were in attendance that had a senior performing, because there were some that were a bit emotional. Both concerts were very good, and it was amazing when you saw the number of seniors at graduation. You also saw that as they were going from their seats into the band, for example, how many are leaving both of those groups. So there'll be a lot of backfilling, I suspect, with younger performers, but they did a very, very good job. Also had the opportunity to go to the high school science day, that was very interesting. They had some very fun projects, and it was enjoyable to sit through a number of those. Chemistry, had quite a number of items, biology, and then I can't remember, it must've been physics was doing the bottle rockets outside. But the kids all seemed to be enjoying...seemed to enjoy what they're doing and explaining either to the other students or some of the adults that had attended. And then finally, I'm sure most have heard, but I was able to attend the regional championship for baseball, the Paccatene did indeed win that, and they'll be playing in sectionals today, so good luck to them.
I had a nice comment by a young teacher after the all-staff breakfast that she had come from a different district, and she said how nice that was, that everybody came together, and the recognition teachers, and the retirement, and, you know, kind of the hoopla, and getting a meal, and just how warm, you know, it made her feel to be...she had been here and then left and then came back, and just what a neat feeling it was to bring everybody together. So that was nice.
I don't know if it was the same one, but they were commenting about how great the speeches were.
No, I didn't hear any of that. Betty did a fine job. You speak off the cuff, and you do such a good job.
Did you say how great or how brief?
I didn't say brief.
Okay.
I heard a lot of good comments. Thank you. Good job.
Everybody, anything else? Let's move on.
The health insurance committee recommendation, as you know, several years we've had a health insurance committee made up of administrators, supervisors, teachers, support staff, and had at least one board member there. And they talk about our health insurance renewal rates and health insurance experience and ways we can mitigate some of the increase that was scheduled for us. This is a unique year in terms of use of health insurance. We actually used more dollars...more dollars are spent on school district pack, Paccatene employees and families, that we paid into premiums, and so we're actually do something like a 9% increase if we follow the track of the WA Health Insurance book value. As it turns out, they were coming in with a, I think, 1.9% increase is what their recommendation was. And that committee got together and found ways that they can lower that increase down to an actual 0.01% decrease. Some of the copays and things were increased, and that's the recommendation then of the committee, is to go with WA Health Insurance for next year and to accept the decrease. It turned out to be a $23,000 decrease in total premium for next year. It's interesting to note, I was at a presentation by Kevin Clowerty, who manages that health insurance committee, and he was mentioning the school district of Paccatene in his presentation to a number of other school districts, and talking about how this committee has really worked together to create a good product with the different plan designs. And he pointed out to everyone who was there that the annual increase in health insurance for WA Trust and most other providers is about a 6% increase annually over the last five years, looking at about 30% total increase. When the school district will pack at... 4%?
We're about 28% in the same...in a six-year time period.
During that same period, almost 5% a year.
Less.
Less decreases. So there's that big gap of where we should be and where we are, much of it due to plan design, much of it due to the use of our health insurance dollars. So that's the first recommendation the committee is bringing forth, is to accept the WA Health Insurance proposal for next year at a slight decrease in premium. That will be a motion.
Is there that motion?
I'll make that in the form of a motion, that the school district enter into a contract with WA Trust for '15, '16. Is that correct?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any questions about what I just...
Is that again July 1 to July 1?
July 1 to July 30, yes.
Yep.
The next part of that is, I'll build on to what I started saying before. One of the reasons we have a decrease is because of a credit they give us for having participation in a personal health assessment. We reach a certain threshold, is it 95%? 90%?
It used to be 92%, now it's 95%.
Okay. Threshold, 92% of our employees and their spouses, if they're covered in family, participating in personal health assessment, we get a 3% decrease on the original rates that are quoted us. We've had that 92%, but this past year, we're very close to not getting it. There needs to be an incentive to get people...get a few people, more people to participate in the personal health assessment, so we can continue that downward trend, or at least getting credit for that 3%. Currently, there's a 3% premium increase for employees who do not participate in personal health assessment. So while the board would pay 85% of the premium for employees that do participate, they would pay 82% of the premium for those who don't participate. The proposal reviewed by the health insurance committee is to increase that additional 3% for those who do not participate. So in effect, the board would pay 85% of the premium for those who do participate, and 79% of the premium for those who do not participate, thinking that we need some motivation to get those...to get additional, a few additional people to participate. So that is the recommendation of the health committee.
If this is approved, how are you going to communicate that to the employees?
We have already sent out a letters indicating...because we had to get people to start calling, making appointments for the personal health assessment next year, and we said, pending board action, this will be the recommendation of the health insurance committee to increase the contribution for those who do not participate. So it has been communicated already, pending board action. And it went out in a letter talking about how you sign up for the personal health assessment, what the advantage is to the district, the advantages to the participant, and then the rates that will be implemented pending your action.
Do they ever ask the people who don't take part, why they don't?
I don't think I know. Do we know who doesn't participate?
Oh, we do.
Oh, we have to, because of the...
We do, we send out letters, but it's still confidential, and it's their personal. We don't give really much feedback to that.
It's confidential? You could write a letter to those people.
I, yes.
Well, I just...
But do they write back? Sorry.
There are a number of reasons I've heard. Some of it is just simply I don't want people knowing about my health. Others are afraid that we're going to use that information later on to say, "Okay, if you don't increase your biometrics by a certain percentage, then we're not going to cover you health insurance-wise," and there's that fear out there that we're going to be misusing the information that we get. I tell people I think that's ultimately where the world is going, but that's not what we've proposed or talked about at all. The reason we...and there are many stories of people who found out, thought things going through a personal health assessment, they might not have found otherwise, and that saves the insurance company money down the road. But there are still a few people who, for either personal reasons or just don't want to do it.
Dave, is there any possibility that, to say for sake of argument, that all 100% of our employees went through the health...would that do anything to our premium rate?
Threshold is 95% right now. There's no...there's no record out there of saying if you got 100%. No. Tightened to this is our wellness program, which is recognized by across the state as well as being very, very effective. If we know...we'll get statistics about how many people have diabetes, et cetera, through this personal health assessment, and we can then tailor our wellness program to target those, the largest number of diseases or illnesses that are out there. Our wellness program has done very well, lots of participation. Jamie Travetowsky, one of the new school nurses, has been heading up that program, and very energetic, enthusiastic about getting people to participate in little games. You saw the trophy for small steps was given out to WLC this year, it was that bench that was sitting in the hallway out there. We had earned it last year, but getting people to work together, making fun to do healthy things. So congratulations to that committee as well for helping us in this area.
Is there a motion to accept that?
So moved forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Local government insurance fund resolution. As you know, we have been participating in local government insurance fund for our property insurance for a number of years, and we've had great rates. Governor recognized those rates as being very good, and also recognized the fund as losing money. So he has recommended that fund be abandoned within a couple of years. Local government insurance fund had to increase their rates, in some cases more than 100% in order to get to the level of funding that's needed. So we shopped around, decided to go somewhere else at a cheaper rate. We need a resolution to be passed by the board to say we're getting out of local government insurance fund. That's the first part of this action. The second part will be then to contract with another provider for that. So there are questions on the first part, on the resolution.
Has the resolution...I'm sorry, has the local government insurance fund proposal become part of the proposed budget, or has it already gone through?
Can't tell you that.
So it was still a proposal, I mean, it could be pulled out?
It could, but their rates are still going up.
Oh, their rates are still going up.
We're not getting out just because they won't be here in two years, it's because they had to increase their rates over 100%.
And that's, we already know that.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we withdraw from the local government insurance fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wonder where the governor was when he said that.
The next item is the CHUB property insurance approval, and include in your packet online where they quote by various property insurance, boiler insurance, et cetera. Carl, I understand this CHUB property insurance approval includes all of the components, the boiler and the rest?
Correct.
So that's all one?
No, the CHUB is basically our property insurance, and the boiler insurance is under XL Liberty.
So, but we don't have a motion to approve the boiler insurance. It comes under this?
It comes under...yeah, still the same agent Gallagher.
Oh. Okay. But it's separate from CHUB then?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't have an action...we don't need an action? Did we have Gallagher before?
Yes, we did.
So we're just going to continue with Gallagher for the boiler?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion to use CHUB for property insurance?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that stand for something? Is that somebody's name? Or what are we going with here?
I don't know. It's been that way for a long time.
Either way, it's weird.
Yes. It's fine.
So all of the proposed bids are there, and this is the lowest bid?
It's local government property insurance is $46,000 higher than this bid, so... And Carl, how does this bid compare to last year's WEP? Last year, if you look at the documents, it's slightly higher under the property insurance. I think it's the summary page. It's about $9,000 higher than our property insurance last year. Okay. And if we would've went with local government, it would've been 47,000. Yes, right. But overall, the difference for us is about 9,000. 9,000 property.
We were getting a good deal from local government insurance. We had been a good deal for a number of years, too.
Too good of local.
That's what it appears, right. And they saw us through the fire and some of those things, so we...
Did a great job.
Yeah. And they did very well working with us at that time, I recall. Joining me in the city council update, I did meet with the mayor, and he agreed with pretty much what the...some of the board position was, that if there's a reason to meet, and there's something that we need to get done, we should do that, but until then, we'll just put it at hold. Both parties are very agreeable to that. High school scholarship fund summary. In your packet, there's a nice list of scholarships handed out this year. And a couple of years ago, we started breaking it down by pulling out the local scholarships. And of that, 2015 amount, 859,263, or almost 264,000, that was local this year compared to 258 last year. The total amount includes some of the university... The total amount includes some of the university and college scholarships that are allocated to, to students. So I, I thought it was impressive just to note the local contributions and when I talk to guidance counselors, that's a lot of money for a district our size and to watch that award ceremony is, and see those kids getting. I also wanted to point out, and I think it's, it's, well, also in here is a list of students who received those, those scholarships. There are a number of scholarships that are given out by court president Steve Shamble and I think it's worth noting that there are some, some pretty good scholarships that are there, I think because of the position Steve is in. In my simple mind, it sounds like people come to Steve and say, oh, I don't have anybody to give money to, do you have any idea? And Steve turns them towards the high school scholarship foundation. And there were, the Albert Rhodes Scholarship is, is one, that's been for a number of years, a significant amount of money. Christensen Scholarship is another, that was awarded this year. That was $2,000 a year for four years to four students for that one. And then there was another one this year, Intervener Scholarship. So I, I think it's nice having, Steve has a, has having that way to funnel that money into our, our students, because those were significant dollar hawks going to our students.
It's a pretty easy thing to do, you know, when people come in and they, they don't really have any heirs or whatever and you, they ask, what do you do? And it's, it's a, it's really nice to be able to say, you know, there's a lot of kids that need scholarships and, you know, you, you know, you could really make a, a difference. And typically, people, you know, it's easy. All you have to do is put it in front of them and then. Of course, I first tell them, you know, you could just pay your attorney or you could do this. Well, I think I'll do the.
I mentioned the Christensen, when the Rhodes Scholarship was $5,000 to four students and that's been going on. So a total of $20,000 a year, that's been going on for a number of years already, so significant dollars there. So thank you to all those, those donors.
Yep. Pretty neat.
Chess team at Nationals, once again, we did have the chess team go to Nationals. There are, there is a summary of the participants and how they did in the packet. Congratulations to the participants as well as coach Tim Hideman. Very, very nice. We had an individual who did very well for the second year, is that?
A, a couple of them actually. One of them's a freshman, Hemlof, and Drake Hideman did very well, so I noticed in that. So our chess team looks strong for the next few years.
That's good. Next item is the Destination Imagination Team at Global Finals. This is the second year in a row they've gone to Global Finals and did very well there. Great experience for the Super Kejua Fractalistic, Speladosia Seven.
Easy for you to say.
Practice. Congratulations to those coaches and the team members as well. And then Superintendent Public Construction has named June 1st through 5th the Summer Food Service Program Week. And since we are participating, we can recognize that proclamation. Last thing I'd like to recognize, not on the agenda, but these letters came to me after the agenda went out. And these are two letters from Department of Public Construction, each acknowledging the work at the Wopacatina Learning Center, Mr. Urs Palmer and, and his staff. The first one is, please acknowledge the Learning Center selected by the Wisconsin RTI Center as a school of merit for reading, for their work accomplished in the implementation of a culturally responsive, multi-level system of support. So that, that's RTI, it was applied for one of six, two schools statewide to be recognized for the 14, 15 school year. Second one is related to that, and that is selected by the RTI Center as a school of merit for their work accomplished in the implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports, or PBIS. Wopacatina Learning Center was one of 165 schools statewide to be recognized for the year. So congratulations to John, your staff. Thank you, but good work. That's, it's not easy to do. It takes buy-in from the entire staff in order to do that and there has to be evidence of that and that it's working. And that's what they saw.
There's 166 schools in the state?
There would be 427 school districts. And of that, many districts have more than one elementary school, so it is pretty.
Yeah, it is. Great.
Can I move right on then?
You certainly can.
Future dates. At your place is a tentative draft agenda for tonight, tonight's meeting, beginning at 5:30, registration was probably sit down by 6 o'clock. I've asked Jim Macy and Bill Bracken to select from those topics and it was a moving target as the date came near because some of the legislative action has taken place. So they're going to select from those topics, it will not be addressing all of them, but, but it will be a very interesting presentation tonight. We invited, as before, invited a number of local, surrounding school districts. A lot of things going on this time of the year. We'll have two representatives from Wild Rose joining us tonight and other than that we'll have, will all of our administrative cabinet members will be there. So it'll be about 24 people in attendance. We'll be in the brick room, that's what they call it, behind the bar at Simpsons.
Good.
Tuesday, July 14th is our regular board meeting, beginning at 7:00 AM. And you were, I assume you saw in your packet the invitation to the Summer Leadership Institute put on by WSB. If you're interested in going to that, it's on July 18th. Just let our office know and we'll take care of the registration. And then last for me is the Annual School Health Summary for 2014-15. That summary was in your packet. The school nurses put that together just to give you an idea of the types of issues they deal with and the number of issues nurses are dealing with throughout the school year. It's a quite comprehensive list of things and if you take the time to go through it, it does give you a good idea of what their day is like. No two days are the same.
Did the year go pretty smoothly?
Well, having a second nurse certainly made a difference. So in relative to other years, it went very smooth, although I would suggest that the, medical condition of, we have some very severe medically fragile kids in our, in our schools. We've had ambulance, ambulances here a number of times for students with a number of, not only injuries, but.
Seizure disorders?
Seizures, seizures. And we're concerned about it. We seem to have, concerned enough to have a second nurse on staff and it's, it's a relief to have that. But even with that nurse, there are a lot of actions that our support staff and teachers have to take in times of emergency. And they performed just outstanding in those situations this year. If there's a model for how to handle a kid having a seizure on a playground and needing a diet stat, it's, it's what our teachers and support staff did at that time. So there are those things, there are the everyday visits to the health center, the nursing services. But the summary gives a good idea of what's going on.
Are we going to continue? You have two nurses then?
That is our plan, yes.
Is Julie full-time?
Jamie Trubertowski is full-time, yes.
She is full-time. It says here that 22.3 percent of the Learning Center is identified diagnosed with a health condition.
What'd you say? With what?
There are 157 students, or about 22.3 percent of the school, with a diagnosed health condition that requires some amount of maintenance, surveillance, planning, and annual care. 22 percent of them.
It's going to keep going up.
That's huge.
It's 21 percent at high school.
9 percent at chain. 10 percent at middle school. 21,000.
We need another nurse?
We need a doctor.
Psychiatrist. And one of the big increases we've seen is monitoring concussions. That's been a, we started that a couple of years ago and monitoring and testing kids, whether they can come back from the concussion, when they can come back. That's taken a lot of time and, but it's something that we were remiss in years ago and it's just coming to everyone's attention how important it is. So that's, all these things are add-ons to what school nurses have always done in the past. So if you haven't had a chance to, the plans through that document, they did a good job with that.
Consent agenda. Requires a motion and a second.
Remove approval for consent agenda. Second.
All in favor? Let's roll call.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Kristen Greenfield?
Yes.
Stephen Johnson?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Pat DeFaire?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Your turn.